Intermediate inspections and final inspections, the county can issue COs. And so, anything that was in progress and in work, we, they continue to do. We have not yet been able to finalize any decisions because it's ultimately the county's decision, but we know that this is a potential issue. And one of the things that I want to talk to Mr. Cornell about is that if they have not made a decision whether you have a building permit, but you didn't get full your electrical permit for the building, and you're now at the point in time you need your electrical permit, if that is included as a, as an acceptable thing to continue on through the moratorium. And I would, I imagine that that answer will probably come out of the law department rather than out of the, out of the folks in buildings. But that'll be up to the county law department to make that decision as to how it, how it applies to the moratorium or what the intent with the county commission was on that.
Can you please clarify just for one second, just to see if you can clarify or ask us to speak for a second?
Before we do, you mentioned, Coach, if a permit's in hand, what about the permit applications? Have you discussed with DeKalb about going ahead and reviewing those permit applications that have been applied for that combination at this point?
I have not discussed that. But I will, and here again, it'll turn on the county attorney's determination of what the meaning is in the moratorium, Mr. Pike, whether they would do it. But I'll, if they're, I don't, we're doing an audit right now. Mr. Garrett, you want to tell them the audit that you're doing?
Yes. What we're working on right now, and when we complete it, we'll share it with you. We are contacting DeKalb County and finding out exactly when the moratorium was imposed, what applications they received, and what actually is in the hopper, including all building permits, any zoning applications, any variance applications, any trade permits that might be going through, even permitting on a large-scale project that might be phase one because we want to know what are you going to do when phase two comes in. We also want to address their codes versus the codes that you all adopted the other evening. The thrust of it is, is to find out the status of all of these applications and plot them on the city's map so we know where they are. So when you do see that it's going to be occurring during this moratorium period, you understand the reason for it and what that is. So the goal is to not only get the type of permit or action that is occurring, we're going to get the address of where it is, and then we'll plot it on a map for you.
Okay.
So this does include zoning and variance applications?
Well, those that are in the law system.
Right, but they imposed like a month moratorium even before?
They, they imposed it on, they voted on it Tuesday, and it didn't come into effect until the following month. So there probably were some applications that were made between Tuesday and Monday for persons who wanted to do that. It would have been, it was not our determination to make since it's the county that does it. But had it been, if they were to ask me, I would say that everything that was applied for between Tuesday and up till the end of business on Friday, that is in the hopper and is entitled to be finished through. But Ms. Garrett's talking about those two separate different things. Once we get to the things that are like phase one or phase two, that's going to be more in terms of a handoff decision that is more akin to the IGA of how do we do it? The themes that we're talking about right now would be, everything that you have in place, we want you to finish and get to the point of doing all your inspections. There'll be a higher level decision on if you have kind of phase one and phase two projects because the county's not going to want to do another year's worth of projects that haven't even started yet. And so we'll, that is a whole different conversation that I, I would think almost 100% will result in we determine how we do the transfer over and we take it on.
One other thing that we're looking at too, outside of those fixed applications, because of application cycles, a zoning, a rezoning application could have been filed two months ago to reach an agenda later, that might be February where planning analyses are being prepared. So I want to capture that as well. You know, what's in the stage of being held and reviewed that was submitted prior to, filed under their, their rules, that is working its way through the process of staff to reach their planning commission and ultimately report of commissioners. So we want to identify those too.
It's my understanding they stopped most of those prior to, if they couldn't get into, you know, the, the last meeting before the city went live, they were not accepting applications.
Right.
I guess a bigger concern is me, to me, or the folks that were down there Thursday and Friday filing for a building permit, paid their fees, and from what I hear, I think I hear you saying is it may be March before they get a building permit, after we go through the moratorium period and then get up and running, issue, review their plans and issue a permit, there seems to be a little bit of disconnect between permits in the pipeline, ID, lied for and paid for versus, but not issued, versus permits that have been issued and are ongoing. And it's those permits that have not been issued that, that I guess I'm most concerned about because there's a lot of folks that were there.
And we're worried about that too because that would capture a lot of the trade permits.
Yes.
The building permit is issued first, then the trades come in following that, and that's the limbo that Bill and I are concerned about.
Councilmember, it is our belief that all of those that were applied for between Tuesday and Friday, they should go forward with it and go through it. What we don't want to have is be two weeks from now when they start not getting them to, that's when we react. And that's why we're going right now and building this up and ensuring, and having the discussions to ensure that they're on the same plane, Bill, as we anticipate them being on, so that we don't come two weeks from now and we have people who are coming to you and say, "I can't get it done," rather than we want to be able to say by hopefully maybe Monday or Tuesday of next week, since we're, what we're doing right now, everything you see here is generated overnight. But it's on the top of our agenda because we don't, we don't want to get to a place where somebody is coming back and saying, "It's not working."
Ms. Garrett, when will you report it?
We're working on that now. Hopefully, we will have that because of the holidays. I would say the first week in January, if not sooner. In fact, Daniel is the intern with Riley McLemmon. He's helping me and assisting in doing that, and he's already talked with Gary Cornell. So he knows what our desires are, and he's been very cooperative in helping him get that. Some of it, you know, doesn't all occur in the planning department. It occurs in other departments. So that's what he's trying to help us with, handing us off to the other contact.
Any intent to maybe be proactive and have a conversation with those that are in that pile?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think we need to know who's in that pile for sure.
We'll let them know that we know too.
Yeah, we could certainly reach out to them stating that we understand that they filed prior to the moratorium and they're in that 30-day period, and especially once we get the opinion from the law department at DeKalb County, what happens with those trade permits or any other subsequent permits that would follow the building permit, we can then advise them. Rest assured, you will continue to be able to file for subsequent permits under your current building permit. Anything new or a phase two of a project or a future phase, you will come to City Hall. So we'll identify that, and we will make sure that those builders, developers, or other, because it's not just building permits, it's land disturbance permits too.
Right.
You know, what happens with them, and they're done in phases as well. And then we have inspections that are done in phases. So then you get those trade permits as well. You've got water, sewer, electrical, then you're dealing with utility companies. So we've got to capture all of it. And I want to thank Bill for loaning his intern because it's really going to require somebody digging through some files to get it.
Question, ask me a question.
The one that concerns me is the occupation taxes. You're looking at well over 10% of your budget, the first year budget. The past due date for those is not until May 1st. And if there's a way to instruct DeKalb not to renew those Brookhaven businesses for occupation taxes, I would try to see if we can find a way to make that happen. The alcohol, we were prepared a couple of weeks ago to step in and renew those, and we're backed off. I honestly, at this point, if we were to change our minds, I don't know if we could get them out by the 31st. But the occupation taxes, we're prepared to send letters with the renewal notices in early January so that we can start renewing those as early as January 17th. And that's a significant amount of your budget. Now, I'll have to, this is the first I've heard that we were doing that for occupation taxes too. So I'd have to get Mr. Riley's opinion on what, you know, if there's a reason why we can't, but it would have significant budgetary impact if we don't renew those.
Obviously, their renewal, occupational tax renewal are different than alcohol, the dates are different.
That is correct.
So when do they usually renew, at the beginning of the year?
The occupation taxes, you have to complete your calendar year first because a component of it is your gross receipts for the previous year.
Right, okay.
So no one's going to be able to do theirs before January 1st anyhow. Normally, March and April is the timeframe when, when a lot of the renewals come in. I would be concerned that maybe someone might get a little eager realizing that there's a two-week window to get some of that in and maybe a little aggressive in getting some businesses to renew. And maybe they wouldn't take that initiative, but you know, there's a lot of money riding on it, and I just assume I'd take that chance if we can have the opportunity to renew those in-house.
Well, two things before you answer that. Obviously, we're going to be relying on DeKalb County's information on the occupational taxes.
Which we have already.
Right. And I also know that there's, you've been involved in programs to get, capture those taxes where people haven't been paying.
Correct.
Is that something you already have in progress or you will have in progress in the next month or so?
Absolutely. The first thing we want to do is the renewals. As soon as we let people know, "We're in town, we're your, we're your new partner, make sure you renew with us and disregard any notices from DeKalb," the better.
So you made a policy from us too on what, how we're going to calculate it on occupation taxes?
Yes, we've adopted the resolution, but not the rate schedule.
Right.
I had one inquiry yesterday that, that asked, and I said, you know, "This is the DeKalb rate. Brookhaven hasn't adopted a rate yet, but based on what's happened in other, the other DeKalb city incorporated, the rate was simply carried over, and that's something that council will consider." Their concern was whether or not it was going to increase. So, you know, to the best I could, I've tried to explain that even though you have to make that decision, I have heard nothing verbally that would indicate y'all were anticipating going up on that rate. So, you know, if we can wait, if, I mean, if we can hold off on DeKalb or knowing those, it would certainly be advantageous.
And if there is a flurry of renewals, I mean, the moratorium that's flying, that DeKalb has says that they renew and retain revenue, if there is, if there is a flurry of activity through now and 17th, is that revenue that we're going to recoup somehow or is it just lost? Or, I mean, not lost, but I mean, it stays with the county?
We don't, under, under the charter of the 30-day notice provision, those, those items remain with the county until the 30 days is over. One of the, the absolute reason I came to see you on Monday to ensure that I had your authority to go ahead and get that part sent was that, but we can't, I think that Mr. Pike's advice is, is well-placed, but to the, to the extent we can, we can go ahead and notify business owners that they may renew after the 17th and give them the place. And to the extent that they all know that the city is not going to raise the rate, that it will remain the same as it was with the county, there's not very many business owners that like to race out and pay their money. That's why they all pay in March and April. And so I think the, the public relations piece, notwithstanding what we are able to do legally, would be to make sure everybody knows that the rate's not going to go up and make sure everybody knows that on the 17th and thereafter, they can pay it at home.
Okay. So I guess let it go with finance and make, I don't know what communications has to do with it. Maybe we'll have something drafted to let people know in addition to what you're.
Well, I, I'd like to be clear that, make sure that we must get this communication out. This information is critical for businesses and our citizens to understand. It's going to cause a lot of confusion in this transition period we need to get in front. So I'd like to see us, one, make sure we, we address all the businesses that need to pay these taxes in a letter, and two, that we put all of this information up on our website so that people looking to understand where they make their payments know, they know the right process.
Can we get a rate, can we get our rate on the agenda in the next few days? And we get to talk about that, obviously, probably, we don't want to be racehorse, so we want to make sure we get that message out too.
I have one other question for Mr. Riley. So the letter that, that we're, that is before the agenda item?
Yes.
This, that letter, if I recall, doesn't speak to the occupation tax.
It does.
It does.
It does. It reads, I didn't send it, I'm in front of communications.
It excluded police services.
It says, it says, yes, it says that we will take over business licenses, alcohol licenses, and other regulated licenses, licensing is described in chapter 15 of the DeKalb Code of Ordinances, and that was to, on January 17th, 2014. It includes all of those, business licenses, alcohol licenses, and all the other regulated industries is outlined in that.
I think the letter should go out well before the 17th.
Absolutely, Mayor. I think that Ms. Pike's correct that it, and if you're directing us to go ahead and submit that, what you would like to see in that ordinance to be the same rate as DeKalb, we can prepare that and place it before you. That's the will of the mayor and council, that that's how we should prepare it.
We'll discuss it, obviously, but yeah, that's not, that's fine. Please do that first, and if there's anything we need to change, we'll change.
We'll prepare it in that manner so everybody knows that that's what we're bringing before you.
One more question for this, Rob. Is it just chapter 15? Because I believe occupation taxes is 24.
We called that out, and we called out chapter 15.
Okay.
The regulated industries, 15. I got you.
Anybody need more questions and discussion?
So, when was we possibly planning to have this for council?
I'd say Friday.
We're just talking about that, yes.
We can have a, we can have a resolution to adopt the rate on Friday.
Obviously, we'll be privileged to this information before Friday.
It would be good. But you say mostly you start looking at it after December 30th when they're.
Right. I'm more concerned with them getting a letter from DeKalb saying, "Here's your renewal form, please fill it out," before they get a form from us saying, "Here's your renewal form, please fill it out."
Stay on top of it.
I would like to ask Marie, if, when we get this information, if you could provide us with insight of what surrounding areas are doing for their rates?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are you just looking at areas, jurisdictions that are contiguous to the city of Brookhaven, or can we reach out to capture North Fulton and some of the new cities?
I would say A first, contiguous, and then B, let's reach out.
Okay, all right. We'll make sure we capture all the new cities.
I can respond to that if you'd like. I've done that survey already.
Oh, good.
I have the data.
There you go.
But in a nutshell, DeKalb is significantly lower than the Fulton County cities and unincorporated Fulton County. The DeKalb cities and unincorporated DeKalb are the lower of the two.
And the DeKalb cities and the county are equal?
Some, some have the same rate schedules, but no, not all of them. I believe Shamblee or Dorville, one of the two, has a per-employee only, and it's a really low fee, less than $100. But most of the DeKalb cities have a gross receipt and a number of employees component to that, like unincorporated does.
Can that go out, emailed to them?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to email that to them.
Do you have a, a date in your head of when we'll be able to get this communication up on our website about these transition processes?
Well, we should be able to, if everything gets, if it's placed on your agenda for Friday morning, you know, the occupation license fee, and I don't see any reason why it couldn't be loaded to your website immediately. Where's Bob?
I'm right here.
Okay.
It'll take about, once complete, it'll take about two minutes to.
Well, I'm also talking about the zoning and building permitting and all those permitting things.
Yeah, so that piece is already in the works.
Yeah.
But it is undergoing review, obviously, by the city manager. Make sure that the verbiage is correct.
Right.
And the language is right, so that's already under review. We've got several other things that are going, and those will get posted as soon as review is done.
But if we could have, if we could also come up with a letter that's going to go out in the application and have those on a separate page on the website so that, you know, business license and alcohol license renewal, so that if somebody's looking, it is there and they can download and send it in if they want.
So Chris, Marie, Bob, and Tom, all together on the same floor. Meeting's still on.
And we go.
No, we're trying to move it forward.
Bobby is Bill. Bobby is Bill.
Yes, my point.
We've just mentioned two different mediums for communicating this, one being the webpage and the second being a letter going out. Maybe we really need to make sure we're examining other ways that we can make sure we maximize the communication of this.
Well, what we could do is, you know, identify like any civic clubs, business alliances that, you know, meet on a regular basis, that, that information could be shared with them as well.
Mr. Mayor, this may be a good opportunity for press release. I'll do that to you.
Well, let's check with, we don't want to upset any apple cards in any negotiations before we, you know, before we send some like that out.
Mayor and council, you guys, if we may, if we could speak and figure out the timing of the communications, because we have several going out.
Sure.
Don't want to, don't want to cloud it so we miss one, because we've talked about several items. If you don't mind, if we can speak about it, and then we'll get back to you guys and see what that schedule looks like and if that's to me Charles' approval.
Fine, with me. Okay. And I, just as a side note, can you add to our work session on Saturday, our communications free-for-all presentation? There's a lot of ideas up here, but, you know, we really want to communicate with our constituents in a, in a new and better way.
Right.
You know, we need a way to capture emails, to get, send emails out to, you know, we've all got our own list and our civic association, but we need to get a master plan for all that.
Mr. Mayor, would that be, would that be communications and out?
Yes.
Communications and IT.
Right.
Okay, we'll do that.
Aaron, if you could come up to.
So, Mr. Mayor, on that, we are, we have spoken with communications so far, so a couple of things for you guys that we're doing there. Creating email database.
Wait, wait, is that?
Is that out of business?
Is that part of the action item? No, let's hold on one second. Yeah, I'm sorry. I kind of delved, drove it off a little bit. We got to drive it back. We got to approve action item five. That was our discussion on action item five. Is there a motion on the floor?
There's a, there's a motion.
No motion. Because you were just going through.
That's right. There's responses to the presentation.
Presentation, exactly. A motion on the floor for action item five.
I'll, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the letter from Acting City Attorney from December 16th, 2012, action item 12, discussion opposed to authorize Acting City Attorney to notify DeKalb County regarding certain services to the new city of Brookhaven, Georgia.
Your second.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor of action item five, please sign a box by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. My first case in the record that action item five has passed. Other business?
None from the staff, Mayor. Must be something.
Would this be a word? Okay.
Yes. Mayor, council, as you all know, we're preparing for a special call to the council meeting to review the vendor contracts and await your decision on award. At this time, we've tentatively scheduled it at 9:30 and in the morning, in the morning.
Friday morning.
Friday morning, 9:30. I don't know if anyone is wedded to that time at all, or if there's some flexibility to perhaps move it to 11:30, and only for the reason because we've now added some additional agenda items, and we have a deadline by 8:00 AM or 8:30 AM to get that notice posted to have a 24-hour period. That way, we can be sure the city attorney is looking at the language and how we're drafting the agenda items and that you all can take a look at it too, Mr. Mayor. So is there a preference on time, or if it's 9:30, we'll get it done? If not?
You just need more time?
Yes, sir.
Sure, that's fine with me.
Can everybody move it to 11:30?
We have blocked the facility from 9:00 to 12:00.
Just three months?
Capitol City Country Club has offered a free space, and I will tell you, we have gone through probably 11 different places and have not.
That's right.
Haven't been able to get it.
There's been no room at the end, I can assure you.
No room whatsoever. Daniel can attest to this.
Yeah.
We couldn't get it here as well, so I called an individual and said, "Is there any way we can just get a facility?" And we got a facility.
If it's only available till noon, maybe we should make it at 11:00.
Yeah, probably 11:00. We actually reached out to Brookhaven Library, but if you look, they're not open on Fridays. So, if you could do, if you could do 11 o'clock, that would help, that would allow us to get the agenda updated, posted in the proper amount of time, and.
So you're asking to move it to.
Just move the time.
Yeah, I want to have. Sure. Perfect.
Do you have a location? What is the location?
One person.
No call back.
You're getting close to them. You're very close. I was like, you don't even go in my front yard.
What did you say? What is it on Friday that we're, can you just go on mic?
The reason for it?
Yeah. Not the timetable, but what are we doing on Friday?
What you're doing on Friday, you all are aware that we have a work session scheduled tomorrow evening at 6 p.m. whereby you will receive presentations from all vendors still outstanding in a couple of works and community development. Because there has been a concern over, we've got a moratorium in place, it gets listed on the 17th and to try and stand up certain departments and get them ready to do business in the new year, we looked at the Friday.
Councilman to vote.
To councilman to vote. So, we're going to get in direction for that. And now, we'll be adding a few things on the purchasing policy and other things that you mentioned this evening. We'll take care of that business as well because as we're nearing the end of the year, we're going to be losing days. And perhaps this might be a good time to make the announcement. City Hall will be closed Christmas Eve Day and Christmas Day. So, that only gives us three working days next week to get any further business conducted by year end.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And Mayor, there's one of the considerations that we could have done it at City Hall, but in lieu of the decision that will be made to provide services to the city, we thought it was appropriate to have that decision made inside the city limit. So, that was where those challenges come up.
All right.
One last thing. I want to make sure that we put up all public notices on our website as soon as we can. I know that we're going through very short timeframes with these announcements and special meetings. But it's important to be able to tell our citizens, this is the one place where we're going to have everything posted in addition to the legal insurance. So, we'll make sure we get that updated.
And also, when they're available, if we can add minutes to the agenda page from past meetings, just update with the minutes.
Well, we've got that process.
I'm sorry.
There's a page on there that has agendas and dates and, but let's go ahead and add a section that includes the minutes also from the previous meeting so that those are available on the website.
And council, we just started just passing that along to our communications department.
Would you just announce both of the next three meetings we have just so people can hear?
Yes.
Times, location.
Tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. Friday morning at 11:00 a.m. at Capitol City Club. That is the city council meeting, special call meeting. Saturday morning beginning at 9:30, a work session to hear the report from the Recreation Committee of the Governor's Commission. And now also to get a introduction and understanding of the communications arm of the city. So, that will be starting at 9:30. We don't yet.
Is it St. Mark's?
No.
City Hall, St. Mark's.
Is that not the line? We don't have a place yet. We've tried.
Let me at City Hall for this note.
Correct.
To City Hall.
That solves that problem. Thank you.
That's an understatement for you. You don't know what word's going to be. That's an understatement.
We know it now.
So, we know.
We do now. City Hall. City Hall. So, tomorrow night, City Hall. Saturday morning, City Hall. Tomorrow, Friday morning, City Council, Capitol City. So, that's the three. So, we know the times. 6:00 p.m. tomorrow night at City Hall. Friday, 11:00 a.m. at Capitol City Club. Do we know rooms?
Room, Capitol City.
Room is, based on time, we'll get you the room.
Okay. The guy at the guard check can tell you what room. That's one. Capitol City, the guy at the guard check will tell you where Brookhaven.
And we'll get in the time and just a reminder, it's at no cost.
All right, thank you. And Saturday morning at 9:30 at City Hall. And this will be in the big conference room up front left.
Correct.
Okay, so we got it all down pat. And I can't forget that.
Marie, please. You mentioned the review of vendors on Thursday and Parks and Communications on Saturday.
Parks will be just the Parks Committee of the Governor's Commission.
Is there, I thought one of the original intentions was also doing budget review.
Yes, that's going to be tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow, Thursday. That's your first item.
And we can take up any more budget issues on Saturday too.
And we can put that on the agenda. So, if you don't want to address it and feel as you don't need to, then you don't need to.
You there for both, Chris?
I was about to say, you can take up budget issues that don't require my input.
Sure, on Saturday.
My wife won't let me be there that day.
Didn't expect you to be there. Appreciate it. All right. Any other comments?
Please.
Any other business on that? Any comments on the other business? All right, no more. Public comments. Any public comments? Okay. Mayor's comments. Thank you all for making it here. Thank you all for the work you're doing. There you get a lot of do this, do that, please. Give me this, give me that. And I'll see you all there. I like having you all facing this too. I enjoy that because I can see the looks on your faces when we ask for something. It was smirk or a tear or, you know. Thank you. Okay. No executive session is needed. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I salute.
For a second. Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I prefer please on the minutes of adjournment. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.